Evening and welcome to the Eagle County School District Board of Education meeting, September 24th, 2025. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the new teachers that came to our work session this afternoon to talk about their experience about being recently hired with the district and to the principals of Berry Creek Middle School and Eagle Valley Middle School and Gypsum Creek Middle School and World Academy, those principals for sharing what's going on with their schools. Very exciting. All right, we're going to start the regular session portion of the meeting tonight with approval of the consent agenda. These are items of a more routine nature. On the consent agenda this evening are approval of the meeting minutes from September 10th, approval of the personnel list, approval of the DAC membership list, I'm not on that right, yeah, and approval of monitoring a board GP for E-Board Self-Assessment. Any item may be removed and considered separately. Otherwise, this is an action item.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Juan. Natalia.
Ms. Alter?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Tibercunas?
Aye.
Super thanks. Motion passes 7-0. Next on the agenda, we have our reports, starting with the report of the superintendent.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to start first by acknowledging that we've got some visitors here tonight. Often, we present to an empty room, so happy to see community involvement and public participation. Tonight, we've got a few cards that we've collected. If anybody's in the room who would like to address the board during public participation, you need to complete a blue card. They were located on the table outside, so we'll give you a couple of minutes here while we're making our reports to draft your blue card and bring them up here to somebody on the board. Many of you who are here, I know I've met over the years, I suspect a few of you are here to express concerns over comments made by one of our teachers in the aftermath of the assassination of Charlie Kirk. Know that the district doesn't condone, excuse, or marginalize those comments. They were unacceptable. They were inappropriate, unprofessional, and we have taken action to address it. And I suspect that you want to know how that situation was handled. I appreciate that, but I have to balance your desire to know with laws that require matters of employee discipline to be kept confidential. That said, I can provide an explanation of how our policies and state law guide employee discipline. When accusations of unprofessional behavior occur, the employee is put on administrative leave while an investigation is conducted. The findings of the investigation determine the next steps and consequences, which exist on a continuum from least to most serious consequence. It starts with a verbal warning and then progresses to a written warning. The next step would be a formal letter of reprimand placed in an HR file. Next would be a leave, and then a suspension without pay, and finally termination. That process is outlined in writing in our Collaborative Bargaining Agreement, Article 20, posted on our website if you'd like to see it. It also aligns with state law around teacher employment, compensation, and discipline, which is referred to often as TECA because we like to use acronyms in education. I know that some of you will not be satisfied unless the employee is fired or resigns. However, state law, specifically TECA, defines actions that can result in termination after a single incident. They include crimes that, if the employee is convicted, pleads no contest to, or receives a deferred sentence for the violation, they can be summarily terminated. Those crimes include things like illegal sale of a controlled substance, contributing to the delinquency of a minor, unlawful sexual conduct, or assaulting a child. That is not what we are dealing with. Inappropriate, unacceptable, and unprofessional, absolutely, but not illegal. I want to be unequivocal in saying there's no place in our classrooms for divisive or disrespectful communication, and I want to assure you that we take this matter very seriously. The teacher acknowledges the mistake, understands the damage it has caused, and has expressed regret, and is present at tonight's meeting. We are an organization built to promote learning and growth, and that applies to students as well as staff. I believe a lesson was learned from this episode, and the employee knows that it cannot and will not happen again. I'd like to end by reflecting, I'd like to end on this topic by reflecting on comments that were sent out today by Chris Romer, Executive Director of the Eagle Valley Partnership, as part of his regular message. His essay was titled "Choosing Civility in Divided Times," and I'll quote him, "That practice civic dialogue by entering conversations to listen, understand, and seek solutions, not just to score points." And I'll say that as I drive to these meetings, I always pass the Eagle Baptist Church coming down Highway 6 from Eagle to Gypsum, and I always read their sign because it's usually clever and inspirational. And as I, you know the signs I'm talking about? As I drove past the church today, the sign said forgiveness, forgiveness is God's grace in action. So, thank you for being here tonight. We look forward to hearing your comments. And that was an impromptu addition to my presentation, so I'm going to jump back into my original presentation. So Natalia, if you could go to the next slide, please. We've got quite a few celebrations that I think the board needs to be aware of. This week, I'll begin celebrating school performance frameworks with those schools that had exemplary performance. And when I say celebrating, I mean I'm going to meet them for Friday Afternoon Club, take them out, and celebrate with them wherever they want to meet, and the tab's on me. So, they've worked really hard to make the growth, and they need to be recognized for that and have a little time to cut loose. So, those schools include Eagle Valley Elementary School, Eagle Valley Middle School, Home State Peak School, and Red Hill Elementary School. Those four had the highest school ratings since COVID, so I want to congratulate them for that. Good work. We have three more schools that reached the 5% growth target that I established for them. That would be Brush Creek Elementary, Eagle County Charter Academy, and VSSA. So, I'm taking seven different schools out for beers, and I'm excited about it, and they deserve it. So, looking forward to that. Also wanted to recognize Eagle Valley High School is a national high school of distinction, recently honored by Project Lead the Way. This is an organization where we get training and curriculum based on science, and their particular programming that raised them to this level of distinction is their biomedical program. It's a very rare opportunity in high schools to have that level of curriculum. They're doing that in association with Colorado Mountain College, where kids are earning college credit and career-ready skills to jump right into well-paying jobs in the medical field. So, congratulations to Eagle Valley High School for that distinction. And finally, we did have a surprise visit from Governor Polis last week, stopped by Gypsum Creek Middle School, wanted to celebrate the construction of the new Gypsum Early Learning Center that's right across the street from GCMS, as well as acknowledge our efforts on the affordable housing development. That will be 40 units of rentals there and 10 units of for-purchase housing with our partnership with Habitat for Humanity. So, those are big accomplishments for this district, big accomplishments for this community, and he was wanting to stop by and recognize us for that work. So, thank you to the governor for stopping by. All right, now to some dry updates. Let's start with the Colorado Economic Update. It's important for us to follow this information because it has a significant impact on our finances in the coming year. So, the Office of State Planning and Budget presented to the Joint Budget Committee last week at the state capitol. The economists in that meeting are warning of economic uncertainty driven largely by unpredictability based on tariffs and consumer spending and a weakening labor market. They are predicting that economic growth will continue but will slow down. They are concerned that Medicaid will become the largest expenditure in the state budget, overtaking K-12 education. So, where that money comes from is to be determined. The inflation rate in Colorado is at 2.1%, which is lower than the national average of 2.9%. So, in that regard, we're looking pretty good. They do expect Tabor refunds to happen this year, but they will not happen the year after that as the state budget continues to get tighter. In the special session that met about a month ago, they did cut $750 million out of the budget to get us into the black, which is a state requirement. We have to have a balanced budget every year. But since that session ended, we have now grown that deficit by $307 million. So, that's going to have to be solved in the legislative session when they come back in January. That's for the current fiscal year. For the next fiscal year, they're already anticipating a $750 million budget deficit that they do not have any idea how they're going to resolve. So, we've got to keep a close eye on that, see how that's going to impact K-12. We will know more about what the budget's going to look like next year on November 1st. That's when we anticipate seeing the governor's budget proposal for the upcoming legislative session, which will start in January. So, we need to keep a close eye on his budget proposal and see how that's going to impact K-12. One tiny piece of good news on the budget front, and CFO Bryson over there is desperately wanting to hear something positive. The Healthy School Meals Program will be fully funded this year. Chris Del Sorto sitting right next to him, high fives on that. So, we're happy that that program will be fully funded this year. However, we still anticipate ballot questions statewide to ask citizens of the state if we'll continue to fully fund that in the future, because it is not looking like it's going to be fully funded at the levels that the state passed previously. So, slight good news on that one. All right, H-1B visa concerns. There was an announcement that came from Washington that H-1B visa application fees would go from $5,000 to $100,000. We do have H-1B visa holders on our staff. We have dual-language schools all over the valley, and we do have to do some recruiting internationally to find enough bilingual teachers to cover those positions. Some things that I think are important for us to know, the majority of our visa holders are J-1 visa holders, so they're not in this category. The J-1 visas are good for a couple of years, and then we convert them to the J-1. So, there will be some challenges for folks who intend to convert if they've been here for multiple years and would like to stay longer. Right now, we have eight H-1B visa holders, and their positions with us are secure. The $100,000 fee will not apply to them, but it is recommended that they not leave the country because there's concern that they might not be able to return to our community and to their jobs with our kids. So, we'll keep you posted on this more as we learn more about it, but it is definitely a concern for the eight H-1B visa holders in our employ, as well as the 20, how many? Seven? 28 J-1 visa holders that might like to extend their stay here at some point and utilize the H-1B visa conversion. So, that is a concern, but we will stay on it. So, next thing on the agenda would be for board members to provide their reports, and after their reports, then we'll move into public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Superintendent Quauman. Harry, would you like to start us off with board reports?
Sure. A couple things. Past time between our last meeting and now, both Leah and I went over to Red Sandstone. They had a ribbon cutting. I didn't realize they lost their outdoor basketball court when we redid the makeover for the school because of the preschool took over basically where the playground used to be. So, they finally got a nice basketball court, so we went out there and celebrated that. I did see on our notes the district accountability. If you still want to get on that, it's a great way of learning about our district. You hear from every department in our district and all the principals. I always found it really fascinating to hear, especially the principals, if you're a fifth grade parent, or you have a student with a fifth grader or a ninth grader, those transition years of hearing what the new schools are going to look like. I would highly recommend getting to those DAC meetings. Lastly, as we look at trying to find money places, especially for education, there is a ballot issue this one for 1A. Part of it goes to wildfire and another part goes to early childhood. We know that if you spend money in early childhood and education, the more kids get educated, the better world we have. So, if you need any information on that, you can see me later. Thanks.
Thanks, Harry. Lou?
Hey. One of the amazing partnerships we have is with Youth Power, and they provide after-school activities for our students. And yesterday, I was invited to cook at the middle school. They're doing Latin cooking, and so I was there teaching everybody how to make Argentinian empanadas. And yeah, I don't know how to describe the experience. It was fun, chaotic, but in the end, we got them done. Everybody was fed, and we all had a good time. I was exhausted. I just got home, and I was like, I'm going to bed. So, teachers, especially middle school teachers, I don't know how you guys do it, but thank you for teaching our kids.
Thank you, Lou. Juan?
I'm going to go back to my old PTO president days. Wild West Day is this weekend. One function, support nine elementary schools. Be there.
Thanks, Juan. Gretchen?
Yeah, so yesterday, I got to spend the day with also a bunch of middle schoolers at the middle school cross-district school leadership meeting, and it was an energizing experience for sure. The kids came ready to share, and they were thoughtful and so enthusiastic about what was working at the school district, what was not. We dug into the difference between leadership and stewardship and brainstormed some ways that we could make the district better. Things like Home State Peak said there's a lot of sagging happening at school, and they think there could be a school policy to not sag, maybe some school uniforms. Eagle Valley Middle School mentioned needing longer passing periods between classes because there's not enough time to fill your water bottle, go to the bathroom, and get to class, and get to your locker. Gypsum Creek said that the gym gets too hot, and maybe they could fundraise to put some fans in the gym. But yeah, the room was just buzzing, and I was so excited to be there. And there was one particular moment that stood out to me. Tealuck was facilitating today. She's our student engagement coordinator, and she had put some, she'd been putting some pictures of different leaders on the board, and she put up Lux Luther, who's the villain in Superman, and asked the kids if Lux is a leader. And there was a kid from Eagle Valley Middle School, and he said that Lux is not the type of leader that we typically see and that we would typically admire, but he is undeniably a leader. On the other hand, Superman can be seen as the ultimate leader, but this kid argued that maybe Superman might not actually be the best example because being so visible and powerful also makes him a target, and his very presence can put others at risk. And I was just so, I was like, oh my gosh, this is so sophisticated, like the way that these kids are breaking it down. And I just loved, I think, you know, what leadership can look like to one person, might look like something different to someone else, and that it's just such a complex and human experience. And it just gave me tremendous pride in our district and how we are just teaching these kids to analyze and question and engage so thoughtfully with the world around them. So, yeah, thank you, and I look forward to next Tuesday when we get to do the same thing with high schoolers.
Thank you, Gretchen. Kelly?
I'm going to second Juan. Wild West Day is 10 to 3 Sunday for Eagle Ranch. I assume everybody knows, but just in case. The auction does open on Friday. I just got back from a road trip with my mom and my sister, a week on the road, so I'm a little frazzled. I'm going to let Gretchen take my time tonight, but Wild West Day is a great cause for elementary schools. Be there.
Thanks, Kelly. Lilia?
First, I want to thank everyone that's here tonight. Like Superintendent Quauman said, sometimes there's no one here, so it's really nice to have everyone here. And I appreciate, I'm grateful we live in a community where people feel comfortable voicing their opinions and concerns and appreciations. And thank you to Superintendent Quauman for reiterating that there's no place in our district for divisive rhetoric. On a lighter note, I'd like to share a highlight from my last week. Harry mentioned we went to the Red Sandstone Basketball Court ribbon cutting, and it was super inspiring to see the community come together and celebrate something they've worked on for so many years. This has been multiple years, multiple PTOs, multiple districts and town, like everyone's come together. Special thanks to Kevin Foley, Red Sandstone Principals, because it's been so many years, Ms. Laydman and Ms. Heckman, PTO Presidents Fundraising Chairs, especially Dudley Williams for making it all happen. Watching the kids play on the court was amazing. They were already having so much fun. The Red Sandstone Tiger was there. There were giant scissors. It was quite a ceremony. But even more rewarding was seeing, there were so many families there, all the staff, community members were there, sharing an afternoon of food and games, and building a strong community. It's a really amazing example of what we can accomplish when we all come together and support our schools and really support each other. And Red Sandstone presented, Harry and I, and we want to pass it on to the board, a very special Red Sandstone Elementary School basketball as a thanks for your support in getting the very important basketball court made. That's all. Yeah.
Thanks, Lilia.
It was an awesome basketball court. Ready for you.
I just want to say I appreciate the time and effort that all of you, superintendent, assistant superintendent, the Human Resource Department, principal, vice principal, put in to conduct a full and thorough investigation of the very serious incident at VSSA. I appreciate all the parents who are here tonight and community members. You're involved in your kids' education, and you care about what's going on in the schools. Thank you. My son came home from school on Monday, and he said, Dad, you got to watch Tulsi Gabbard's speech at the Charlie Kirk Memorial Service. So, yesterday, I watched it, and I wrote down something she said. She said, "Our schools are meant to teach, to train students to think critically, debate ideas, test their strength in the clash of reason." I like that. I like even more that my son values critical thinking and discussion. And he's not the only one. When I heard Tulsi's speech, a light bulb went off in my head, and I remembered about three years ago, as a board, we spent a year and a half going through our board policies. And our ends policy, our board ends policy on academic achievement, starts off, "Each student will develop the skills to be resourceful, independent learners, and critical, innovative thinkers, who can advocate for themselves and problem-solve effectively." I like that. So, Superintendent, thank you. Thank you for your commitment to educating critical, motivated, and resourceful thinkers. All right. Shall we move on? Okay. Public participation, again, thank you. Thank you all so much for coming. Thank you for turning in the blue cards. We appreciate all your input. Please remember that public participation is limited to three minutes per speaker. There is no combining of minutes from another individual. If you are with a large group, please appoint one spokesperson to respect everyone's time. The board cannot engage in discussion, although there could be a few, there could be future discussion in work sessions or additional research followed by an official response. And you are all more than welcome to stay through the entire meeting. It can be honestly a bit disruptive if a lot of you get up during a presentation, and we have great, great things on the agenda tonight. Shelley Smith is honestly one of the greatest people. She's here every meeting, thank goodness, and she takes up a lot of time, so that's great. All right, so I'll turn it over to Lou, our fantastic secretary. Again, three minutes. When Lou calls your name, please come up to this lectern. There's a little person icon button that you can push, and once that's pushed, then your microphone lights up, and Austin is happy. We like to keep Austin happy. Good? Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say, I saw some last-minute people come in who are not that strict, so if you have a blue card, we can still take them. Just wave it at us, and we'll come get it. Okay, first one up, we have the one and only Wendy Rymall.
Education Foundation of Eagle County, and I'm wearing my hat to represent the event that we have coming up this weekend. Everyone up here shared Wild West Day. It's a fundraiser that benefits our elementary schools. And if you don't know about EFEC, we are, I like to call us, the number-one teacher and staff fan club for Eagle County School District. And a little out of breath because I get nervous public speaking, but we do a lot to support our teachers and our support staff, and we're going to hear from a bunch of people today in today's meeting. And whatever we can do to help you guys celebrate your staff, we're here for you. So, I'll leave these flyers for Wild West Day. Come and join us. I really believe it is the most incredible, what I say, real community event. Everyone from all of our schools comes out. We have around 3,000 people there at any time during the day, and it is a hootin', rootin', good time. So, I'll put these out. And then I, I'm going to take my hat off and get a little bit more serious. I wanted to share the topic that's at hand and why a lot of people are here. I'm a little embarrassed to share that I hesitated to speak. It's a little bit of a scary time to stand up and say what's real and true for oneself without worry or fear of retribution. My dad once said to me, "There's no battle to be fought, only a team to build." That's why I'm speaking up. We're each here to share because we care about our kids and community, which inherently puts us all in this room on the same team. I want to say something about Lara. She's been teaching in this district for 26 years. That's more than two decades of showing up every day for kids, guiding them, encouraging them, and helping them grow. The gift of her service and that of other teachers like her inspires my life, inspires my life's work at the Education Foundation of Eagle County. It's true that Lara made a mistake. She regrets it, and she's here tonight to offer a public apology. One mistake does not erase a lifetime of service. It does not undo the hundreds of students she has taught, supported, and inspired over the years. Across the country, teachers are becoming targets, and the story is making national headlines. Teaching is already a fragile profession. In Eagle County, Colorado, and across the nation, we're facing teacher shortages that make it hard to keep classrooms staffed. Losing a teacher like Lara, someone who has invested so much of her life in our students, would be a real loss for kids in our community. Our kids need their teachers, and our teachers need us to stand behind them. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy. I gotta say, I miss selling those raffle tickets. It's the first year I don't have an elementary student anymore, so no more raffle selling for me, Wendy. I'll buy them, though. Okay, next one, we have Lara Dowling.
Dear community, I sincerely apologize for the comments I made on September 10th and for allowing my emotions, in a very stressful situation, to affect my professional judgment. To be clear, I abhor gun violence in all of its forms. My utmost priority is the well-being of all of our students, as is evidenced by my successful 26-year teaching career. I truly regret any distress this has caused anyone. I intend to learn from this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lara. Next, we have Tessa Kirchner.
I gotta read a speech when there's so many people in the room, it's nerve-wracking. Good evening, I'm Tessa Kirchner, and I want to speak tonight about our teachers, the very heart of our schools. They dedicate their lives to guiding, encouraging, and inspiring our children. They show up every day with patience and creativity, always going far beyond what is asked of them. When our teachers are attacked or undermined, it isn't just them who suffer, it's our whole community. I want to make sure our teachers know this community stands with them. I look forward to tonight's agenda, where we will celebrate all of the people who work so hard to take care of our children: custodians, kitchen staff, school bus drivers, and the Transportation Department, and our principals. And finally, recognition of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which celebrates and recognizes the value that individuals with disabilities bring to the workforce. Education Foundation of Eagle County works hard to support our teachers, our schools, and our students. We hope you will join us this Sunday at Four Eagle Ranch from 10 to 3. This amazing event is in its 35th year. I know that because I've been doing it for 25 of them, and we, we, in past years, had over 3,000 people. And my most favorite part of the event is standing in the middle of the games field, where all the kids are playing their games, and just turning around and seeing all of the amazing and wonderful diversity of our community, which I just love, cherish, and hope we can all embrace. And so I would just hope that, and to let everybody know that all the proceeds from that event go to the elementary and preschools in our valley to support the teachers, kids, and kids. Come join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Tessa. Next, we have Amy Lewis.
Okay. I'm Amy Lewis. I am coming to speak to you as a parent who, of two kids, who went through the Home State Peak School system. And Ms. Lara Dowling was a fantastic art teacher to both my sons, and they have carried art all the way through high school. They both still do art, and even my college student is doing art. So I have to attribute that to a really great teacher, and I just wanted to just say how much I appreciate Lara and her experience and what she brought to my family personally. So, and thank you all.
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have Alexandra Vaughn.
Okay. I just want to take a few minutes and say who I am. I'm Alexandra Vaughn. I grew up here. I grew up in this valley that we call home. I work here now as an adult. Carrie Bangston, you were my teacher at Mentor Middle School. Qualman, you were my principal. You know, I'm here as a concerned citizen, as an alumni of Eagle County Schools. I just want to quickly say, the following is a policy in the VSSA Student Handbook. Bullying can include, but is not limited to pushing, shoving, hitting, and spitting, as well as name-calling, picking on, making fun of, laughing at, excluding someone. Bullying can cause pain and stress to victims and is never justified or excusable. Everyone should enjoy our school equally and feel safe, secure, and accepted regardless of color, race, gender identification, popularity, athletic ability, intelligence, religion, nationality, or sexual orientation. Behavior and conduct is outlined by Level 1, 2, and 3. These bullying behaviors are in the red Level 3, meaning a student will be removed from class, barred from practice, and have a meeting with parents, administrators, and teachers on their behavior. I would also like it to be noted that threatening behavior is bolded. When the teacher decided to cheer for the death of Charlie Kirk and expressed sadness that Trump was not shot, she created trauma to those around her and our community, but also made it clear there is no safe space in the classroom. We must reject threatening behavior. A mistake isn't wishing death upon another. A mistake is not cheering for happiness after a young man was assassinated. A mistake is adding salt instead of sugar into a cake. I'll close with this. I'm nearing 30. I'm eagerly awaiting the day I become a mother, God willing. And I will say this as a future mother: do better. Because when I have children, the last thing you want me doing is to be here having to speak about something like this. When my children are at school age, I hope I never have to have them come home in tears, crying because a teacher was cheering for a death of another human. It's vulgar and it's threatening. So I say and I plead, do better, be better. Put the humanity back in the word "human," please.
Next, we have Linda Beckett.
Hi, I'm Linda Beckett. I live in Gypsum. I'm here to address the comments that Lara made in front of her students, and she used words that communicated that she was happy that Charlie Kirk was killed, and the only thing that would have made it better is if it had been President Trump. Through her comments, she is teaching the future generations of our community that the murder of a peaceful man is a good thing, and is advocating for future violence against those in which she disagrees. Eagle County School District's collective bargaining agreement spells out how teachers are supposed to handle controversial topics. It states clearly that teachers are expected to keep discussions balanced, draw from recognized scholarship, and create space where students feel free to exchange ideas. This employee spoke on behalf of the district as one of your employees, and in doing so, violated your collective bargaining agreement. On September 16th, her principal sent a letter stating that this individual will remain on staff at VSSA. I would like to understand how those statements don't blatantly violate her responsibilities as an employee and your collective bargaining agreement. As a taxpayer, I don't understand how that's possible. How is it okay with each of you board members that this is occurring? And do you mean to tell me that this employee is stage one of five of this verbal warning? I would like to know where she is in the cascade of this, but you will probably tell me that that's not available. Another letter from the principal states that they are taking steps to prevent this from occurring again, including providing additional training for staff. Okay, so let me get this straight. As a taxpayer, I'm supposed to tolerate this vile rhetoric that is dangerous and intended to persuade students towards violence? And when a teacher egregiously breaks their code of conduct, it is I, again, the taxpayer, whose dollars pay more for training to secure this person's job? What kind of training is done for an adult staff member who promotes murder and violence in the presence of her students? Honestly, I don't have much confidence in rehabilitating the behaviors of one who is arrogant and entitled enough to flagrantly use our taxpayer dollars to promote her own personal agenda in the classroom. And Mr. Qualman, I forgive her, but that doesn't mean I trust her. Out of the mouth, the heart speaks. It is the school board's responsibility, duty, and obligation as elected officials to never allow the permissioning of violence as a mean to solve disputes. In my opinion, your employee promoted rhetoric that does contribute to the delinquency of minors.
Thank you, Linda. We appreciate you coming here.
The only right choice is zero tolerance in this kind of behavior.
Ms. Tuvarkun, before you proceed, just want to make a point of clarification. In my statement previously, I did not indicate that the consequence for the teacher was step one of five. I listed out a continuum of possible consequences that ramp up in severity. I consider it a serious offense, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Colbert.
Hi, I'm Susan Wagonact-Colbert. I'm here to talk about Lara as well, Lara, Lara, whatever. It's not illegal to say that Charlie deserved to die and that you're glad that he did. People have a right to say that, and you're, but you're an employee representing education, and you say to students, students as truth and as your opinion as well, that, I'm sorry, you say this to our students as, as it's truth, not just opinion, that they deserve to die. You can't walk into school and say that you're into homicide. You can't be an educator at our school and say, hey, I'm comfortable with cold-blooded murder. More people need to be killed. I mean, that's advocating and radicalizing kids to become school shooters. It's disgusting. If you're glad that Charlie Kirk was killed, and you thought he had it coming to him, and you sit and, you know, my kid has to share a class with you, I don't, I don't think they should be under your authority and have to, have to listen to that and feel safe. It's, it's unacceptable. She's advertising that she's a maniac. She has no decency, no compassion, or humanity, and she's indifferent to death. And not only that, but she's sickly gleeful about it. That makes her a threat, and that makes her dangerous. We need to be really careful about the type of people we allow around our children. This person is not entitled to work for us. This is more than just a disagreement about the border, or crime, or politics, or anything like that. We're talking about murder. Would the school be okay if a girl was raped and Lara said, oh, she had it coming to her? No, we wouldn't be. What if she said Irina should have been killed on the train, she had it coming to her? No, we wouldn't be okay with that either. Or the flood victims in Texas? Oh, that's karma. Hope they can swim. Never would we be okay with that. Never. And we're not saying she should be put in prison, but we're saying that she should not belong in an authority position around our children, period. They aren't allowed around my family, these people that speak this way. I was at Charlie Kirk's funeral, the memorial in Arizona, and it was absolutely amazing. And this is disgusting. Charlie Kirk would not agree with it either. I think that if she doesn't get through her five strikes that you've set out, Qualman, then I think we can petition that we have her resign, and I think we can do that as a town.
Next, we have Tim Chickenman.
I know, I'm seeing the computer. I don't want my computer and that computer to make another computer. Tim, first, the electric speed limit sign on West River Creek Boulevard going westbound is out. It's been out for a few weeks. I brought this up at Avon Town Council last night, but I'm bringing it up to you guys because of Avon Elementary being right there. It's a sign that flashes lights, tells you to slow down. I know it's Avon's responsibility, but I figured maybe you guys could put a little pressure, like, hey, kids are, lives are at stake. I don't know. Second, is having voter registration drives at the high schools. Next Tuesday, I'm having one at Second Street Tavern from 6 to 8. I know you guys are all registered, but if you have friends that aren't, send them over between 6 and 8, then get registered up. And one thing, when I was getting recertified this year, I noticed that in Colorado, unlike any other state I've lived in, you can register to vote at 15. So, you know, in the spring, majority of the kids in high school are 15 or older, so they can get registered to vote. I think it's, you know, getting them, you know, early would be great, and then as soon as they turn 18, they're already registered, and then go vote, which plays right into my next point: student participation in their lives. Sorry. A few weeks ago, some Battle Mountain High School students reached out to me about their planned walkout. They wanted help getting organized and what steps to take in the future. I explained that attending meetings is a very good start. When I was in school, we were told by the adults that, or told, the adults always knew what was best for us and let them handle things. Now that I'm an adult, I really don't think that's true. Most of us in this room have never had to practice active shooter drills. Hell, Columbine was my sophomore year in college. We can't relate to what these kids are going through. We need their input and how they are feeling and what concerns they have. I have a solution, though: making attending a certain number of school board meetings part of the curriculum. Think about all the good info that they can bring to you, which would in turn allow you to serve these students better. Plus, get kids involved in having a voice and being involved in their future. Even town council or county commissioner meetings would be great. I think this would be a win-win, plus these kids are the future of this valley, and we need to give them every chance we can. Lastly, we are all humans. We all make mistakes. As long as we learn from these mistakes, we grow and become better humans. If people were judged by one thing said, I would have been banned from these rooms long ago because I still occasionally drop F-bombs at council meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Tim. We should give him a couple more minutes so that he speaks a little slower. Next, we have Spencer Gustafson. I hope I said it right, otherwise I'm sorry.
I'm a senior at Veilski and Snowboard Academy, and first off, I just want to say I love my teachers. I respect them very much. They are excellent teachers. But this, I was not present for this incident, and that's not why I'm here to talk about it, but this is a constant theme I've seen throughout my years at VSSA. The first example that comes to mind is, in freshman biology class, we had Critical Thinking Monday, which involved a slideshow of Ben Shapiro and AOC on separate slides, and it basically, our teacher basically went along the lines of saying, Ben Shapiro is dumb, AOC is smart. That was basically what Critical Thinking Monday involved. As a freshman, it was biology class. The second example that comes to mind was, last year in English class, we were watching a music video and analyzing it for symbols, and the teacher, there was a firearm placed into a red cloth in the music video, and our teacher paused the video and presented this statement as a fact. She said, "The red cloth represents Republicans caring more about firearms than human lives." So this is a common theme that I've seen throughout my years. I love VSSA. It's a truly unique school, but I think this needs to be addressed and worked on. Thank you.
Next, we have Peter Gustafson.
Thank you for giving us license to be a little emotional. You kind of broke the seal on that. It's kind of a, an emotional It's kind of an emotional topic. And Laura, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for apologizing. It's great to hear the support for you. I don't know you. I don't hate you. I do forgive you. I hate what you did. So some of these comments have probably already been addressed. I wrote them down. I'll try to get through them all. But like Spencer mentioned, VSSA is a very special school. Has a unique culture, excellent academics. In my opinion, some of the best educators in the county most of the time. That's why I'm here. The administrative response to this has failed its students, its values, and its reputation. The incident itself was disturbing, but the response was equally lacking. No transparency. No apparent response from the teacher to explain their statements, which started tonight. I don't think it should be over. It's about two weeks into it. I have three kids at the school. Sixth grade all the way through 12th. I've heard similar "I wish you were" statements made against each other in my house. They're childish statements. They're made by children. When that happens in our house, it's dealt with swiftly. It includes an apology, perhaps a short timeout, but most importantly, an opportunity to reflect, learn, and grow. The response to this gave no details, leaving the VSSA community to rely upon gossip and rumor as a primary means of communication. The message to students, however, was clear. A person in authority can say whatever they want with impunity. This was a missed opportunity to teach leadership and accountability. And without an apology, continued apology from the teacher, the chance to rebuild that trust is lost. Worse, it raises questions about whether this educator is capable of complying with Policy IMB, which calls for "the process of examining evidence, facts, and differing viewpoints through the exercise of freedom of thought and moral choice." In the time of school shootings, the teacher is the very last person who should be endorsing gun violence. I heard a quote today, and it resonated. When someone tells you who they are and what they believe, you need to believe them. The comment made failed to exercise decent judgment and basic emotional intelligence. I choose to believe this was a moment of weakness and poor judgment, something for which all of us are probably guilty of, just not while at work and in front of children in which we have an unfair power dynamic. The response was unacceptable. Tolerating this rhetoric from teachers creates division with students and fear to engage in conversation. I am not, for the record, in favor of anyone's employment being terminated. It might teach the employee a hard lesson, but it teaches our children the wrong lesson. That ideas should be punished, not discussed, and that silence is safer than dialogue. In the words of Rahm Emanuel, I would encourage you, do not let this crisis go to waste. Think about this between now and November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Barb Wendell.
Barb Wendell, I'm an Eagle County resident, parent of grown kids, but a concerned citizen and a former teacher. Laura, I'd like to address directly to you. As a former teacher, I would be appalled to think that would ever come out of my mouth to my students. We have a... We upheld a code of honor for being upright for our students and setting an example. And you guys referenced Eagle County Policy IMB. Mr. Qualman, underneath administration rights and responsibilities, leadership starts from the top, and it filters down. I think it's time for you to take that leadership role and have this teacher be removed from teaching. Maybe stay in the district somewhere else. I kept telling myself on the way here, what would Charlie do? What would Charlie do? So I'm trying to act in a manner that Charlie Kirk would act. It says, "A teacher who's in doubt about the appropriateness of discussing certain controversial issues in the classroom or regarding his or her ability to explore such issues shall confer with the building principal. And if the building principal and teacher are unable to agree, then she would go to you, the superintendent." I'm assuming that did not happen in this case. The teacher is also... has a responsibility to select issues for study and discussion, which contribute to the attainment of course objectives and the educational program established by the board, and to make available to students materials concerning the various aspects of the issue. She also has the obligation to be objective as possible and to present fairly the several sides of the issue. I'm assuming that she didn't show any of the podcasts or the videos, multiple, multiple videos of Charlie Kirk. He does not lecture on dissent. He lectures on critical thinking, like the prior gentleman said, learning, having kids speak up for what's right, not saying that it's okay to kill someone in cold blood. So I'm asking that she get... would get removed as a teacher and maybe work in an administrative role, not close to any kids. That's absolutely unacceptable behavior as a former teacher. I think she should be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have Jenny Kette.
Hi, thanks for giving me time to speak. I have lived here since I was 19. I'm now a lot older. Both my kids have grown up here. My daughter went from Brush Creek Elementary all the way through school, Eagle Valley High School. My husband was killed when my son was going into fifth grade. At the end of fifth grade, he asked to go to Veil Christian Academy and Veil Christian High School. And I am grateful for that because all the stuff that goes on is unbelievable to me, that you're not just teaching math, science, how to... just good stuff. But this gay pride stuff... And I'm not against gay. I don't care. But all of it. And the fact that this teacher is allowed to say freely whatever she wants about somebody being murdered, about Charlie Kirk being murdered, and too bad it's not Trump, and really? So I'm frustrated because I watched this school system, and I didn't know better. I know better now. I watched this school system destroy my daughter. You know my daughter. She thinks she's non-binary. And two of her best friends have transitioned to be men, which that's not even statistically correct. So the things... Like, I want to know, what else would Laura say to her kids underneath? That we don't know. These kids, what else are they hearing that we don't know? We know that this was said because it's so egregious, so awful. But what else has she said? Or what else have some of the other teachers said and done that are very underneath? And the critical race theory is not... It's been proven that the DEI and all that stuff is not equality. It is not creating equality between people. Equity is not the same thing. So Laura should not be teaching children. She's been here 26 years. It's time to retire if this is what she thinks and she's allowing politics, murder, other people's possible death into the classroom. I know some teachers that worked at the Veil Ski and Snowboard School, and there is a lot of wokeness going on, which I don't think is appropriate. Teach our children properly. Teach them what they need to know. Teach them social skills. But none of this other rhetoric of, you can change your body parts, and you can... And too bad that Trump didn't die too. Really? I thought we were supposed to respect our president, no matter who it is, no matter which side they're on. That's an office we're supposed to respect, just like our kids are supposed to respect us as parents. So I vote for her to not be teaching anymore. Thank you.
Okay, we got it. Thank you, Jenny. And last but not least, we have Andrew Kaiser.
Presuppositions. I'm married to a teacher. I'm very pro-teacher. I'm very pro-education. We graduated three Battle Mountain High School students. Love education. I'm all about it. So I don't want to be painted into a corner that because I disagree with how a particular teacher spoke and what is justice for that teacher, that I'm anti-teacher in any way. So with that presupposition, it seems strange to me that while Mr. Qualman did a great job of addressing the policy, we're addressing the board beyond policy. So you did a great job discussing what the policy is. I'm sure the principal on site did a phenomenal job of addressing the policy for that situation with what is written. But who could fathom that we're standing here talking about a teacher in one of the great professions of the world who wants somebody to die? And not just somebody, but a good man who talked and dialogued and debated, which is the essence of education. No manual, except one, contemplates that kind of person, right? And that kind of comment. And I would submit to you that the sign that you read is in line with that manual. That manual, the Bible, does acknowledge that our hearts are totally evil and that without some sort of restraint, we would all be that way. And so this is not just a mistake, Board. We are not talking about just a mistake, like I didn't file my lesson plans on time with the principal on site. We're talking about an egregious breach of trust. And so while the five steps might be the policy that we all envisioned in a normal world, the Board is called to deal, and you were voted in because the community thought you had the temerity to make tough decisions. And so beyond the policy is why I'm here tonight. I understand the policy, but nobody except one man could presume to know the heart of mankind and what was expressed in that classroom. So I call for the Board to take the extra step to assess whether that policy is applicable, steps one through five. And I understand you're not at step one, Mr. Qualman. So I appreciate that, right? But are we at step five? I did not hear that your step five allowed for this type of breach of public trust. It's just incredulous, right? I appreciate the fact that you saw that sign and you... From my world and life view, you cherry-picked forgiveness. Forgiveness is absolutely one aspect of the Christian faith. But justice is also the next step. And so acknowledgement of her error is great. The fact that the school board has some sort of response is great. And now the community is looking for justice, not just the enforcement of a policy. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you to everybody for coming. I want to specifically thank Spencer for your comments and remind you and everybody else in the room, when incidents like you experience in ninth grade and 11th grade occur, please reach out to me. Reach out to Katie Jarno, sitting over here, Assistant Superintendent Melissa Rewald-Thuon. It's our job to make sure that our teachers are providing balanced instruction that is not trying to indoctrinate you in any specific beliefs. And if you feel that that's happening to you in the classroom, we need to address it. So thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing those comments. And please let your principal know. Let us know when that happens. At this point, we're done with public participation. I see a hand up. Please call me, email me. I'm happy to set up time to speak with you outside of the meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent Qualman. All right, moving along in our agenda, we've got new and old business. So this is an opportunity for input on work session and agenda items. Tentative topics for the October 22nd, 2025 Board Meeting, also known as my last Board Meeting, for the record. Right, Natasha? Yep, October 22nd, 2025. Tentative topics. We've got maybe an executive session. And in work session, we've got CASB conference topic input. Great. And then we've got some more school improvement plan presentations from Avon Elementary, Edwards Elementary, Red Sandstone Elementary, and the Edwards Early Learning Center. In regular session, we've got a number of monitoring reports. And then in the Business and Operations section, Housing Master Plan update, and final October county update? October count update, maybe? All right. So are there any other items that Board members would like to add to the October 22nd meeting, also known as my last meeting?
Maybe a full review of your performance.
That's fine. Is this an action item? Nope. Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to we get another Mary Ann Stavney Update Report in our Public Interest Items for Discussion section. Stocktake Presentation on the District's Pathways and Education Initiative. Yep. How's that?
Excellent. Thank you for that introduction. I appreciate it. All right, my name's Mary Ann Stavney. I work with Eagle County School District as a learning and instruction specialist. So a lot of my time is spent with new educators as they get hired, new educator induction over the course of their first year, as well as working with teacher leaders and all kinds of folks. The District Leadership Team Aligning Curriculum Practices to High Standards is what this pathway falls under. It's to create a locally grown Eagle County School District educator pool from current Eagle County School students, staff, and residents. So our Pathways in Education has been an effort we have worked on for many years. It's done in conjunction with Colorado Mountain College and some other partnerships to try and recruit people from within our own community. I had the opportunity to be here earlier today during the work session and had some new educators here to kind of talk about their experience. And they all represent different pathways to becoming a teacher. Why do we grow our own? We have a commitment to district values, and we feel that those folks who live in our community and grow up in our community understand our values of being engaged learners, inspired professionals, that we have a commitment to equity and a sense of adventure in a caring community, that we align our teacher preparation practices. It's one of my points of pride, I think, with Colorado Mountain College, that they really work closely with us in order to align our teacher preparation so that when people come through their system, they're actually already kind of set up for working at our district. So it's a team of people. I just happen to be the person who comes in and presents. Dr. Katie Jarno is part of our curriculum instruction team. She's our Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Ashley Winon is the Director of Instruction, and I work directly with her. Another very important person is Shannon Grant. She's the Director of Post-Secondary Learning and Career Readiness. In addition, we work closely with Human Resources, Adele Wilson as our Chief Human Resources Officer, and also Carol Ammanza, who's come onto the team in recent... Basically, in about a year or so, as a human resources recruiter. So within our partnerships, we work... We've created a CareerX internship, which goes beyond education into all kinds of career pathways. But CareerX does offer internships for students who are interested in becoming a teacher. We work with CareerWise in teacher apprenticeship programs in conjunction with CMC, and then Youth Power 365 as well. The pathways to getting and becoming a teacher, you have your traditional teacher preparation programs, which CMC has, Colorado Mesa, and then all over the state and from beyond. programs, which CMC has, Colorado Mesa, and then all over the state and from beyond. We do have a lot of teachers who come to us who become alternative licensed teachers. So that's a pathway when someone who has their undergraduate degree decides, this is a calling that I have, I want to become a teacher. They can interview, obtain a job, and then they work with another provider who helps train them while they're on the job. So it can be kind of a daunting process, but we have several people who do it, and I've listed those providers we work with. And in addition, we have a mentoring program that works at Colorado Mountain College, and so they do some training around mentorship. So our goal is to maintain or increase the number of locally grown educators participating in our programs. We have three improvement strategies. We work directly with our high school students to give them opportunities to do internships and apprenticeships in education. We have coaching up our own employees. So we have many employees who work with us. They may come in as a guest teacher, become a perm sub, and choose to become an educator. We've worked with AmeriCorps volunteers who have stepped in to becoming teachers for us. And so we're constantly trying to coach up people that are already here and committed to our students. And then obviously, job fairs and the rest. Traditional recruitment is a challenging prospect anymore. I have recently been at University of Northern Colorado, which is where I got my job at Eagle County School District 30 years ago this month, was my first year of teaching here for Eagle Valley Middle School. And when I went to the job fair, it was packed, and it was in a big arena, and you had to elbow your way up to get to a principal. And unfortunately, now it's 30 recruiters to one student/teacher who's coming through. And so there is a real change. There's a concern in our world about how we are able to keep people interested in teaching. It's a hard job. So in recent years, we've worked with CareerWise apprenticeships. This year, we did not have any new apprenticeships. The folks that are from 2425, we are in their second year of their teacher apprenticeship. We do have lots of, we've doubled our CareerX internships, which is just the high school kids doing an internship. It's not a formal apprenticeship. But we also have what's called CMC Teacher Apprentices. So these are adults who apprentice with the district to become a teacher. It's a program that's been brought in from Colorado Department of Education, and we had four last year, and we have four additional ones this year, or the same ones this year. In terms of like, what's the latest? So this is the stuff that the Board hasn't really heard or looked at. So we have had a drop in new hires, and I've done new hire, I've done new educator orientation for 10 years. I see the new group that comes in. You'll notice at the bottom row that in 2022, '23, we had 63 new teachers. '23, '24, we had 71 new teachers. So those are kind of, they seem like high numbers, but they're not unusual. I had them when I got hired here. That kind of a crew isn't super unusual. I will say, the year before that, there was very little movement post-COVID. But since then, people tend to come into Eagle County, they get settled in, they stay here for a bit, and things will tend to drop. So last year, we had 47 new teachers, and this year, we're down to 25. I did note that we have 11 school-based therapists, so we have had additional resources put into social-emotional needs and some restructuring of some programming. So I did want to note that we did have 11 school-based therapists, but 35 new educators or teachers in the classroom. Of the 35, nine of them, or 26%, are alternative licensures. So that's an adult who lives in our community, has an undergraduate degree, and is choosing to become a teacher and getting that certification. You'll notice that over the last four years, we went from 13 to 19, down to 11, down to nine. So again, the numbers are somewhat waning at this point. We've hired international hires, and we only had three international hires this year as compared to 11 last year, 21 the year before. Again, I would say that these teachers, they come in, they get settled in, they have a good experience, and so they're kind of stable right now. Of course, with international hires, they do have visa issues, so that might change next year. Our initial licensure, that's your typical teacher prep, your brand-new kid who's right out of school, super enthusiastic, just want to be a teacher. So this year, a higher percentage of that. So we've been attracting initial teachers into our group. And our professional licensed teachers, these are experienced people who are coming from across the country or the front range and come up. And so that percentage seems to be up again. So that's kind of what our group looks like. My celebrations that I kind of gleaned from this, we do have four alumni again, people who graduated from our schools, who have chosen to come back to our district and become teachers. Yay, so excited about that. So that is, totally excites me. When I'm at orientation, I look down in a crowd and I see a kid who used to be in my classroom when I taught at the high school. So super exciting. We have a steady draw from our local community, so we still have alternative licensed teachers. We have an increase in the percentage of educators hired with initial and professional licenses, which is nice because we're not trying to retrain them, stable group of J-1 visas. I would say, in recent years, we've had more cross-district collaboration in coaching and supporting. So between ed tech, multilingual education, we have more people coaching up our new teachers as they arrive, and I think that makes a big difference. And we have an increased number of district housing units. I just have to say, Superintendent Qualman, I think that the efforts around housing have been amazing, and they make a difference. And so I see that in our new teachers being able to have a place to live. We continue to have the challenges when we are hiring without license. It is a stressful pathway. Obviously, the competition from other industries in terms of salary and job demands and affordable housing continue to be our challenges. But I love our teachers. We have some great ones. If you want to see them some more again at another time, by all means, just invite me, and I will bring you teachers.
We do. And I blew it because we should have given you more than 30 minutes.
I know, I know, I know.
It was actually Lou's fault, but...
Okay. At least I know who to blame.
I'm the one that told him we should do it longer next time, so.
You can't just say that after I said it. So yes, we would like them to come back in more time.
That would be great. Everybody good? Any questions? Okay, good. Thank you very much.
I just thank you, Mary Ann. I had so much fun with the teachers. Sorry, they were great. We definitely need more time. They were amazing, inspirational, happy, young. They're young probably, but yeah, it was super fun. Highlight of the day, maybe the week.
And I will bring them back, those particular ones. They love to come back.
Thank you. All right, we got some fun stuff, some resolution approvals, starting with Frank in the National School Bus.
We're starting with Mr. Rine. It's however you feel. The next item on the agenda is show.
Where's Joe? This is Frank.
Good evening.
Starting with Joe.
Yes. I am here today to talk about our amazing custodial staff. And as you all know, an amazing staff usually is led by an amazing leader. That's not me. That's Ms. Elvia Gonzalez, that I tricked into coming here tonight. So we could all give her some credit. She runs an amazing staff of people that are really dedicated to their jobs. You all are in these school buildings all the time. You see how immaculate they are. What you may not know is that some of our staff, or all of our AM staff, is responsible for all the snow removal all winter long. They are responsible for resurfacing gymnasium floors. When teaching staff is off on break, these guys go to work 40 hours a week, on their hands and knees, scraping floors, scraping black marks. It's absolutely amazing to see them, and I don't know why they come to work every day, sometimes with the work that they do. But they are that dedicated to the children, and you can see how they interact with the students, that they really care about their job. So I am here tonight to ask approval of Resolution 2025-26-3, National Custodial Appreciation Day.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-26-3 for National Custodian Day as presented.
Second. Thank you, Gretchen. Thank you, Harry and Natalia.
Ms. Alter.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueenie.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibarkunas.
Aye.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
So I just want to point out, though, Joe, too, it's on October 2nd.
It's on October 2nd.
And it's during the week of September 29th through the 3rd. So if you see your custodians, make sure that you pat them on the back during that time.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Frank. Next up is Chris Del Sordo with our National School Lunch Week and Kitchen Staff Appreciation Resolution.
That is correct. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to recognize my staff, nutrition staff, for all the great work and hard work they do. Asking the Board to, what's the word I'm looking for? Approve. 25-26-3, National School Lunch Week and National Appreciation Day for my staff. We're going to be celebrating ours the week after October break. That's really what the national week is, is when we're on break. We're going to do it the following week. And on Thursday, the 23rd, we're going to celebrate the staff, giving them a little gift. We're all going to go out and just thank them for everything they do, not that we don't thank them every day for what they do. But I would like you guys to approve that resolution.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-26-2 for National School Lunch Week and Kitchen Staff Appreciation as presented, because they do a fantastic job for our kids.
Second. Thank you, Juan and Lou. Natalia.
Ms. Alter.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueenie.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibarkunas.
Aye.
Well, that motion passes 7-0 as well.
Now it's Frank. Goodness, now it's Frank.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yep. Now Frank?
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's all right. I couldn't, I have a lot of things to do. Hi. This week, don't bumble it. Sorry, Joe. He told me twice this week. Make sure you hit the right, okay, sorry. My name's Frank Valice. I'm your new Transportation Director. I'm excited to be here. I started two weeks before the school year started, which is about the perfect amount of time to learn everything there is about this job. I've been in transportation a long time. I've managed restaurants and been in hospitality, and I also have two kids at Edwards Elementary. So huge fan of the school system, that school. I get nostalgic walking through there and seeing that group of people around my kids. And I just wanted to ramble a little bit and let you know some of the observations I've had. I see the same kind of commitment with the drivers that I've been spending times with. I've been doing ride-alongs and watching the routes and seeing where they're going and seeing their interactions with the kids, and it's awesome. I was blown away by it, and I've been blown away, and I just, I didn't realize that they would know most of the kids' names and welcome them on and go so slow and be so gentle with them, and the kids know them. The respect that they're throwing out is coming back. I'm watching the drivers. They're looking at their mirrors, safe following distances, mirrors, turn signals. They're outside when it's dark in the morning, turning on their vehicles, making sure all the lug nuts are there, the tread depth is correct on their tires. It's a cumbersome job, and they work in the morning, they've got a gap, they come back in the afternoon. And from what I've seen, besides being short-staffed, they're in a good spot. There's a lot of experience there. There's a lot of drivers who say, this job is my DNA, which is pretty cool. They've been doing it for 15, 20, 30-plus years. So I've been really impressed, and I'm excited to be here. So with that, I am here today to ask for approval of Resolution 2025-26-1. I think I said that right.
Great. Thank you, Frank, and welcome to the district.
Thank you.
With that, I move to approve Resolution 2025-26-1 for National School Bus Safety as presented.
Second. Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Harry. Natalia.
Ms. Alter.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueenie.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibarkunas.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thanks for all you do. Okay, moving on, more resolutions to approve. Superintendent Qualman?
You have one more, actually, two more. The penultimate is the Resolution to Recognize National Principals Month, which will begin in October. And I think it's important to recognize that all the research would say that the most important factor for kids to be successful in school are quality teachers, quality educators. And closely behind them are the school principals, that they have to organize all those teachers, all the curriculum, all the facility, all the communication. They have an incredible workload. Some of the challenges that they face, you think we face challenges every day in this role. The principal's seat is extremely challenging. So this resolution honors and recognizes the contributions of school principals and assistant principals to the success of students and encourages people in our community to observe the month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of school leadership, ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. So I ask you at this time to please approve that resolution.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-26-4 for National Principals Month as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We'll go to Gretchen. Thank you, Lilia. Thank you, Gretchen. All right, Natalia.
Ms. Alter.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueenie.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibarkunas.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion passes 7-0. Troy with our National Disability Employment Awareness Month recognition. Thank you, sir.
Greetings. It's great to be back. I'm super excited to be back with a strong team and some great work. I know last Board meeting, Tim Moffett came and shared an awful lot about SWOP and a little bit about CLIME, and you've been really familiar with the contribution that both of those programs make to supporting employment opportunities for our students with disabilities. And we certainly want to recognize those folks. Because you saw that, I just want to also expand our understanding that our special ed team, our teachers in particular, our high school teachers, really, their goal for kids is to help them find and secure employment that fits their life, fits their interests, their abilities, their passions, and their careers. And as you move around the community, it's really exciting to be able to see those kids as adults now in employment opportunities. So I'm not asking for approval from you. We're just taking a moment to recognize National Disability Employment Awareness Month and the contribution that all of our teachers make from pre-K on to get our kids to a place where they can live successful adults in our communities. So thanks.
Thank you, Troy. Well, I don't want to say that we save the best for last, but we sort of did. Shelley, it's Shelley time. Mts, 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 mts. Shelley time. Too much?
It's on, right? So a couple people apologized. I'm so sorry you're going last, you have a cold. But I'm so excited because all the group ahead of us really help support early childhood. I just, I'm gonna take one minute. When we moved, our whole new second floor opened that up. Joe and Elvia were there, everybody on his team helping us move and get everything set. So again, it was all hands on deck, and it was a long day. And then Chris has been at so many meetings getting the new GLC ready. He's got nothing else to do other than construction meetings. So thank you, Chris. And then our transportation, so we're just getting to know you, but we have special harnesses So we're just getting to know you, but we have special harnesses in special times. So I like following this group because all those departments go, were special because of our special little ones, and they all go above and beyond. So thank you. Again, each year, for people that are new to the meetings, that we as a Head Start are required to provide information to the board as the grantee. So when we have decisions, they have the background information. So we do come a lot. And I'm going to have to find a reason to be here on the 22nd. I don't know what it is yet, but... So first is enrollment. I'm excited because we are up of prior year. And even since this report, we've grown four more children. So, and if we, we're still looking, and in a minute, I'm going to talk about staffing. If we could hire that qualified infant supervisor we're still looking for, we could have another infant full classroom. So we're, we're able to open all the other classrooms at ELCs who are just looking for one more qualified person. An infant supervisor is a special niche. So we will keep working on enrollment because hopefully when they start with us, they stay with us. And so hopefully, our growth will hopefully impact enrollment long-term. So as Head Start, again, very specific, that we have filled 66 of our 69. We had them all filled by the beginning of the year, but some families did not return. And it takes a while to go through the applications and get the next one. So we have the applications and we feel that we are going to fill them within the 60-day refill requirement. So not concerned about meeting our Head Start enrollment. The only thing I wanted to point out, I was surprised that only three of our enrollments actually were because of the housing adjustment. So we have been able to fill even without, with just three of our enrollments being, taking into account the 30%. So that means that families of four are making less than $24,000. Those are the families that we're serving. So just to put it in perspective. Talked about staffing a little bit. So much better than years ago when we had 22 vacancies. So it's gotten really a lot better. There is some key positions. We had a challenge filling our extended-day programs this year. We're now to only Red Sandstone that we don't have fully staffed. But I'm very grateful to many people of our department team, family service coordinators, our operation coordinator, all of us. It's all hands on deck. So we've closed no programs, even though we are short-staffed. So we're making sure that we can provide that. We continue to have a special education teacher. And then I talked about the infant teacher supervisors. So we have a couple critical positions open. And so I do want to also thank Mary Ann. I benefit from a lot of her work. And several of those people she talked about are coming to work for us and are some of our best. So support that work, too. An update, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but this is a review year. I'll have that be part of the training. But from October 20th through December 5th, we're doing a virtual review of our classrooms where we have to submit one-hour uninterrupted videos to the Office of Head Start in 15 of our different classrooms, where they evaluate the quality of the interactions, instruction, and how we are doing. So that report should come out on how the findings of that evaluation by February. So, which is about when we're coming and sharing with you about the self-assessment. So we'll be getting back to you about that process at that time. And then just a couple official communications that we're supposed to share with you. There is pretty significant funding from the Office of Head Start around nutrition, but we didn't move forward with it because of the match. We only can put about 25% towards, we have to match the other 75%. And obviously, you know with the budgets we have that that is not a realistic investment right now. And then lots of news around Head Start. Not going to have it at all, no longer conserve children that were undocumented. But that, there's a link to the injunction. And that is been, we've been had, told to cease and desist. We continue to do and serve the same children and families that we have before, that nothing has changed officially. And any potential change at this point has been stopped. So just to kind of keep you informed of the federal landscape. Any questions on that before we do the two kind of annual action items? Okay. The first one is to review and approve the Policy Council. And again, thank you, Juan and Wendy, for going to join our, our Policy Council. We had the largest group of Policy Council members. I'm so excited. We have about 17 this year, and it was a great start to the year. So I'm super excited for this year's. And you have the long list of members in your packet. And we do, the board is, the governing body does need to approve those members before we can move forward.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 Policy Council Voting Member List as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Gretchen and Juan. Natalia.
Ms. Alter.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibar Kunas.
Aye.
Great. That motion passes 7-0. Go Shelley, go Shelley, go Shelley, go Shelley.
The last thing is the approval of the bylaws, which again, has to be done each year. And I was really excited that we got through that with that first meeting. Two minor changes, just expanding the number, due to the number of interests and our growing number of classrooms. So that, and clarified what a community member was. It was somewhat vaguely worded on who is eligible to be identified as a community member. So one was more of a clarification, and the other one was to increase the number of voting members. And you have a copy of the bylaws in your packet.
So before we continue, I'm just confused. On our agenda, it has the Policy Counting Vote Member List, but it's the... It's not the list, it's the review of the bylaws.
Apologies, I will work on that in a minute.
Well, that's good because that's what we need to approve now.
Yeah.
Right? So make a motion.
Where is it? Move to approve the 2526 Head Start bylaws as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Harry. Thank you, Lou. Natalia.
Ms. Alter. Sorry. Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Ms. Hovey.
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney.
Aye.
Mr. Penya.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Tibar Kunas.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. And just want to thank you for your time. I know you're dealing with much more significant issues, but you guys are always gracious and allow the time that we have that's required by the Office of Head Start. And I had to share with you, and again, Joe gets a lot of credit, that now all of our playgrounds look like this. So this is the new playgrounds at Edwards Early Learning Center on the backside. And it's been a great investment. And hopefully, you will have reduced children needing special education and more graduates and lots of things because of this investment. So we appreciate you very, very much.
We appreciate you, Shelley. All right. Any feedback from tonight's meeting from the board members?
I noticed Mary Ann's still here. So thank you for staying with us all night, all day. But no, it was, and, but, thank you. The other one is, Tim comes, comes in every now and then and more than often, but he comes to support the teachers or what he thinks is good. And they'll leave and Tim stays. And so just a little shout-out for Tim to that. No, and then, yeah. But I would like to thank everybody for coming in today and showing their support, whether one side or the other. Takes a lot to come up and, and voice your opinion in front of the board. And part of that means we have a strong community that believes in our students.
I'd like to second that, too. And I just, from sitting in a classroom as a teacher and then moving to a principal position and into this position, I wish there were times that we could tell the public exactly what was going on HR-wise, but you just can't. And, you know, it's privacy, it's their life, and it's community's life. And it's really hard when we go through big things like this. And I would just like everyone to know that it's not taken lightly, you know? And there were a few comments tonight about following policy and making sure that things were going in the right direction.